May I request uh Deputy Chief Minister Saith Aleem Ali Soleiman for invocation.
Shilla rahmaalirahim. Arrahmaalirahim. Malikiyobutim. Iyaakana'buduwa iyaakana'stayim. Shrootalladinaan'amtalehim. Morinmogodubalehim. Allahumma'alliummuranah. Alhamdulillah.
Mga kababayan ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas. Mga kababayan ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas.
Kayang mag-ibig. Kaya sa sirahtanan. Alam ng puso sa itikoy buhay. Upang inira. Uyakan ang mahiting. Samanturupi. Ikapasi sigil. Sanadatangtudoksa'siboyat. Solanimkongpograw. Ayunadangtudlakawit. Sa'gagayaminamahar. Angisagatangtukawat. Uyatanunpaydaranibinibig. Angituhinakaronya'payda. Angaydibatibinibig. Luwanakarongangwar. Atikpagsiklaw. Anginidaya napagkaywakabi.
Alhamdulillah. Alhamdulillah. Bangsamoro. Bangsamoro. Lagi kang mamahalig. Walang pipigil sa damdamin. Mga pangako'y tutubarin. Ang buhay kami sayo'y magpagkay. Mananati sa puso't isipan. Ang laha ko ng unim. Tayhan ng buwis ng buhay. Nasa piling ka ng may kapal. Bangsamoro ay tanungtay. Luwag na pawis suwat buhay. Napayapan. Katabukan. Ay atin ang nakantay. Pagpalayin bangsamoro.
Presence of quorum in today's session. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
In view of the certification coming from the Secretary General, uh, Oustad Sra Biyanggal, I, as Presiding Officer of this session, and by virtue of the power bestowed in me by our beloved Speaker, Attorney Pangalian Balindong, I now declare the proceeds of a quorum. Yes, floor leader, what is the pleasure of our floor leader?
Assalamualaikum. Good afternoon to our very energetic Presiding Officer, Attorney Paisalin Tago. My courtesy to our, to the Speaker of the Parliament, Attorney Pangalian Balindong, and, um, to the Deputy Speakers, uh, Attorney, uh, Nabiltan. We have Attorney Omar Semah, and, uh, Deputy Speaker and Deputy Chief Minister, uh, Hatimil Hassan, and of course, our Deputy Chief Minister, Ali Sulaiman, and fellow members of, uh, the Parliament, good afternoon. Thank you for your very good attendance despite our very, uh, disturbing weather. So, uh, to begin, um, Mr. Speaker, I move that we, uh, dispense with the reading of Journal number twelve of July twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-four session.
There, there is a motion to dispense with the reading of Journal number twenty-four of July twenty-four and twenty-five, two thousand twenty-four. Jurisprudically, there being objection, this term is hereby approved.
And, uh, Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve Journal number twelve of July twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five.
There is a motion to approve the Journal, uh, of Journal number twelve of July twenty-four and twenty-five, two thousand twenty-four. Jurisprudically, there being objection, this term is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, we proceed with, uh, item number seven in the Order of Business, Recognition, Commendations, Memorials, Messages, and Communications. I move that we recognize Attorney Rasul Mitmog for a very important message.
The gentleman from Landau del Sur, Angkotabato City, uh, member of Parliament Rasul Mitmog is recognized for a very important message.
Thank you, um, Mr. Speaker. Uh, Presiding Chair, fellow colleagues, uh, despite this, uh, weather, I would like to, uh, greet our fellow, uh, colleague, MP Shak Mastura. A very, very happy birthday.
That is an important message. Sayon na, pakain.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I also move to, uh, allow the celebrant to give his response to the message.
Thank you very much.
The celebrant is, uh, recognized for a...
I did not ask for this, but, uh, it will set up precedent. So every time there will be a birthday, we will have to speak up and do the greeting. But in any case, uh, I'm here as the forty-first member so that we have a quorum today. So it's a special occasion in that case. Thank you very much, Attorney Rasul Mitmog.
Konti lang naman ang pakainin mo, forty-four. Pakainin mo, forty-four. Yes, please, just one minute. I just want to ask a question on this celebrant. How old is he now? Uh, age doesn't matter nga. But ibang... But manaming, oh, lang tawag siya. But, but the celebrant is a lawyer and, uh, he, he will cut me that, that is a privileged communication. It cannot be divulged. Very, it's a very confidential. I thought the confidential not fun, it is not a fun. That is a confidential nature of the, of his status.
I agree, Mr. Speaker. Now we move to, uh, item number nine, uh, in the Order of Business, Bills on Second Reading. May I request the Secretary General to read the title, authors and co-authors of Parliament Bill Number One-seventy-five?
The Secretary has read the, directly to read, uh, BT Parliament Bill Number One-seventy-five together with his status, authors and co-authors.
BT Parliament Bill Number One-hundred-seventy-five entitled, Anak Providing for the Bangsamoro Him Code of the Quorum in Rules. Authors, Members of Parliament, Mohagel Iqbar, Aida Silongan Sya'ilaiha Dumama Alba, and Soharto Ismail. Co-authors, Members of Parliament, Eddy Ali, Ahmad Abbas, Kadir Sinilending Junior, Mataro Listino, Said Sheikh, Abdol Wahab Pak, Abdullah Gayak, Ibrahim Ali, Mosbear Alaudin, Tawakal Mitimbang, Ramon Piyang Senior, Hasseme Dilangalan, Ubaidah Pakasam, Basit Abbas, Khalid Haji Abdullah, Sitipahani Uyooyod, Basir Utu, Michael Mitimbang, Said Salendab, Randall Parkasyo, Susanna Anayatin, Muslimin Jakilan, Muhammad Kelly Antao, Dan Asnavi, Tarhat Amaglangit, and Hamid Malik.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I move that, uh, we recognize MP Soharto Ismail for his, uh, sponsorship speech.
Member of, of the Parliament, who are the male is recognized.
Azubillahiminashshantulrojim. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Wassalamu'alaam ala nabi Abada Amabad. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh.
Power Speaker, Attorney Pangalian Balindong, Tower Floor Leader, Attorney Sya'ilaiha Dumama Alba, Steam Members of the Parliament. Good afternoon. I stand before you today not just to sponsor a measure, but to encourage you to reflect on what truly unite us as Bangsamoro. In our shared pursuit of autonomy, self-determination, and peace, symbols play a profound role. One such symbol is our Bangsamoro hymn. A melody that transcends words, embodying the very essence of the Bangsamoro struggle, our victories, and our hopes for the future. Supporting these legislations extend beyond enforcing the quorum during its performance. It is about nurturing a sense of shared identity. We often speak about building institution and governance infrastructure, but at the heart of every successful movement lies the unspoken power of unity. The hymn as a symbol of our common aspiration, the serve, the respect, reverence, and pride that will guide future generation. By training this mold, but meaningful gesture of respect, we honor the sacrifices of the past and signal to the world that we are serious about our identity and our autonomy. More importantly, it is a reminder to each of us, to every Bangsamoro, that we have accomplished something remarkable and that we should carry that pride in everything we do. Supporting this measure is a commitment to instill this pride in every Bangsamoro citizen, ensuring that our symbol, our hymn, to continue to inspire and unify us for generations to come. I implore each of you to lend your support, not solely for the content of this bill, but what is, but what it represents, our unity, our dignity, and our shared future. Azubillahito fik walidaya. Shukran. Salamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I move that, uh, we refer Parliament Bill One-seventy-five to the Committee on Local Government and the Committee on Basic Higher and Technical Education.
There is a motion to refer, uh, propose Parliament Bill Number One-seventy-five to the Committee on Local Government, Internal and Local Government, and to the Committee on Basic Higher and Technical Education. Jurisprudically, there being objection, this term is hereby approved.
Moving on to, uh, item number two, Bills on Second Reading, may I request the Secretary General to read on second reading the title, Authors and Co-authors of Parliament Bill Number Two-five-six.
The Secretary General is so directed to read the titles, co-authors and co-authors of BT Parliament Bill Number Two-five-six.
BT Parliament Bill Number Two-hundred-fifty-six entitled, Anak Instituting the Free Marriage Counseling Program in the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region, Providing Mechanisms for Its Implementation, Appropriating Funds Therefore, and For Other Purposes. Authors, Members of Parliament, Tawakal Mitimbang, Basir Utu, Swaim Oranon, Mujib Abu, Muhammad Kelly Antao, and Mosbear Alaudin. Co-authors, Members of Parliament, Sya'ilaiha Dumama Alba, Hasseme Dilangalan, Kadir Sinilending Junior, Abdul Karim Miswari, Jafar Rapolo Mikail Matalam, Hatimil Hassan, Norrela Miswari, Aaron Abbas, Don Martin Kahalan, Randall Parkasyo, Aida Silongan, Susanna Anayatin, Michael Mitimbang, Romeo Semah, Ali Muntaha Babaw, Hussein Munyus, Don Mustapaloong, Nabila Margarita Pangandaman, Dan Asnavi, Soharto Ismail, Ahmad Abbas, Abdoladjes Sabinoden, and Basit Abbas.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, I move that, uh, we recognize the main author, MP Tawakal Vividimbang for his sponsu- sponsorship speech.
Member of Parliament, Tawakamitimang is recognized for the sponsorship, uh, message.
Azubillahiminashshantulrojim. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillah, you have been astain. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. My courtesy and respect to the Chief Minister of Bangsamoro Transition Authority, Chief Minister Ahud Balawak Ibrahim. My courtesy and respect to the Deputy Chief Minister, House, the Chief, the Speaker, the Speaker, Pangalian Balindong, Deputy Speaker, my fellow member of this august body, the Presiding Speaker. Again, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. Today, I rise to speak on an act of profound import- importance, the establishment of a free marriage counseling program in the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region and Muslimin Denaw. This initiative is not merely a service. It is a commitment to the well-being of our families and communities. Marriage is a foundation of society. And in the Bangsamoro region, we recognize the unique challenges that couples face. This program aims to provide accessible professional counseling to help couples navigate conflicts, strengthen their relationship, and foster healthy family environments. Unfortunately, many couples in our region cannot access counseling. This is why this bill, Proposal Six to Bridge That Gap. The proposed bill will provide, number one, access to qualified counselors. It aims to ensure that couples have access to counselors who are not only trained in conflict resolution, but are also well-versed in Islamic teachings. This dual expertise is essential for providing relevant and respectful guidance. Number two, confidentiality and respect. The counseling process will pri- prioritize confidentiality, allowing couples to discuss their issues openly without fear of judgment or repercussion. This safe space is crucial for fostering honest communication. Number three, premarital counseling. It will also emphasize the importance of premarital counseling by equipping couples with the tools to communicate effectively and address potential issues before they arise. We can help build stronger foundation for marriage. Number four, community involvement. This bill encourages the involvement of local community leaders. Their participation can help bridge the gaps, promote understanding, and ensure that our approach is culturally relevant. Lastly, awareness and education. Finally, this initiative aims to raise awareness about the importance of counseling and educate the community on available resources. By fostering a culture that values seeking help, we can reduce the stigma often associated with marital difficulties. Lastly, Lastly, in a region marked by diversity of resilience, we have the opportunity to support families in building stronger bonds. Let us embrace this initiative with the urgency and seriousness it deserves. Together, we can create a supportive framework that empowers couples to try. I urge my fellow members of the parliament to support this act. Let us pave the way for a brighter future where love, understanding, and compassion flourish in every household across the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region and Muslimin Denau. Wabilhay topik walidaya. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. Shukran.
Thank you very much, MP Tawakal Mitimbang. And uh, Mr. Speaker, I move that uh we refer Parliament Bill Number 256 to the Committee on Social Services and Development.
BT Parliament Bill Number 256 is moved to be referred to the Committee on Social Services and Development. Jurisprudential, there being no objection, this aim is hereby approved.
Uh, moving on, we are now on item number ten in the Order of Business uh Resolutions Referring to the Committee. We have for the Committee Report Number 92. Uh, again, may I request the Secretary General to read the uh title and author and co-authors.
The Secretary is directed to read the titles of Committee Report Number 92 together with its authors and co-authors.
Committee Report Number 92 submitted by the Committee on Rules in relation to proposed Resolution Number 641 entitled, A Resolution Respectfully Requesting the House of Representatives and the Senate of the Philippines to further extend the transition period from 2025 to 2028, thereby postponing the first regular parliamentary elections in the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region to allow sufficient time to resolve legal issues affecting the parliamentary elections, ensure broader participation of political parties, and a full understanding by the Bangsamoro electorate of the new parliamentary elections, and enable the Bangsamoro government to sustain the momentum of socioeconomic progress in the region. Authors, Members of Parliament, Baintan Nampatuwan, Khalid Haji Abdallah, Jamila Ramos, Sitipahani Uyoyod, Liza Adamiam, Jose Lorena, Michael Mitimbang, Japarapolo Mikail Matalam, Rasul Ismael, Basir Utu, Kaden Sinilinding Junior, Said Sheikh, and Hatimil Hassan. Co-authors, Members of Parliament, Abdullah Jessa Minudin, Faisal Karun, Said Sheikh, Hussein Munyus, Muhammad Yakub, Haron Abbas, Muhammad Kelli Antao, Don Mustapaloong, Susana Anayatin, Ahmad Abbas, Tarhat Amaglangit, Dan Asnavi, Abdul Karim Miswari, and Dan Martin Kahalan.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Chairperson of the Committee on Rules, no other than our floor leader, Attorney Sya'ilaja Dumama Alba.
The Chair of the Committee on Rules, uh, Member of Parliament, Tower Floor Leader, Sya', Attorney Sya'ilya Dumama Alba. You recognize, madam?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Mr. Speaker, esteemed colleagues and fellow public servants, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. On behalf of the Committee on Rules, I am honored to present Committee Report Number 92 pertaining to proposed Resolution Number 641 to this plenary. This proposed resolution, filed by the main proponent, MP Baintan Nampatuwan, is an expression of the resolve of the BTA Parliament to respectfully request the House of Representatives and the Senate of the Philippines to further extend the transition period in the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region from 2025 to 2028, and thereby postpone the conduct to the first regular parliamentary elections. The COR, the Committee on Rules, has deliberated the merits and implications of this proposal and now submits it to the plenary with amendments for the parliament's consideration. The call for extending further the transition period stems from the legal, administrative, and political challenges presently confronting the region. Most notably, the implications of this recent Supreme Court decision, which upheld the validity of Republic Act Number 11054 or the Bangsamoro Organic Law, but excluded the province of Sulu from the constituent political units comprising the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region and Muslimin Denau. The said Supreme Court decision may have plausible legal grounds, but it has nonetheless brought about legal, administrative, and political ambiguities that the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region and all its stakeholders must confront. During the deliberations on PR 641, the COR identified the following key points supporting the extension of the Bangsamoro transition period. Number one, resolving legal uncertainties, addressing the ongoing legal challenges including Sulu's participation, and the constitutionality of the Bangsamoro Electoral Code will take time. Number two, ensuring broader political participation. As of October 2024, only four political parties have been accredited. Extending the transition allows for greater political participation, making the parliamentary system more inclusive. Number three, voters' education. The electorate requires more time to familiarize themselves with the Bangsamoro electoral system and the region's parliamentary form of government. Postponing the election ensures adequate voter education. Number four, sustaining socioeconomic progress. The BARM has made significant progress in development. The extension will allow the region to continue to focus on these efforts, avoiding potential disruptions caused by an ill-timed election. Mr. Speaker, esteemed colleagues, the committee has reached a consensus that this proposed resolution merits the consideration of this honorable parliament. With this, I respectfully submit Committee Report Number 62 along with the proposed amendments to Resolution Number 641 for the parliament's approval. Salemualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Mr. Speaker, I would also like to invite the main proponent, MP Baintan Nampatuwan, if there is any interpolation on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much, floor leader.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt Committee Report Number 92 for deliberation.
It's a motion to adopt Committee Report Number 92 for deliberation. Jurisprudential, there being no objection, this aim is hereby approved.
I move to open the period of interpolation.
It's a motion to open the period of interpolation of Committee Report Number 92. Jurisprudential, there being no objection, this aim is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Deputy Speaker, Attorney Nabiltan.
The gentleman from Sulu is recognized. Deputy Speaker Nabiltan.
Maraming salamat po, uh, Presiding Officer at the floor leader. Pwede po bang magtanong na para maliwalanakan lang tayo ng lahat dito?
Opo, Mr. Speaker.
The proponent is willing to, if she's willing to accept your qualification or query.
Opo, Mr. Speaker. Nakatagalog siya eh. Kaya sakatingong tagalog.
Okay, yes. Okay.
Uh, I'll, I'll, I'll just go for a simple. Inglisin ko nalang kasi uh, hindi naman. Uh, ibang resolution na to. Was this uh precipitated or uh did the Supreme Court ruling of September 9th uh propelled or uh gave the way to filing this resolution or was it ahead of time?
Um, thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Uh, ang resolution po natin ay napile ng uh I think two week, um, more than a week ago, last Monday. Ano, two weeks ago. Um, after the decision of the Supreme Court with regards to the exclusion of Sulu.
And the, I'm sure the honorable proponent is aware of this, that Sulu has been excluded.
Yes, Your Honor.
What could be the effect, uh, Your Honor, Mr. Speaker? If the uh, resolution, uh, resolution of the motion for recall, you are also aware of the motion for recall file?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
What could be the possible effect if uh the, there is, there will be motion, there will be a decision on the motion and uh the resolution has not been acted upon by the House and the Senate?
Um, 'yung pong uh decision po ng Supreme Court patungkol dun sa motion for reconsideration ay uh separate po na usapin. Um, but um, kinonsider po natin yun na isang factor doon sa ating request sa kongreso. So 'yung ating request po ay uh nasa kongreso na po kung aaksyonan nila. But um, nonetheless, uh, makakatulong kung uh in uh soon as possible time may desisyon po dun sa Sulu. Uh, napactor in po 'yung uh malaking bagay na pag uh uh desisyon ng Supreme Court sa exclusion ng Sulu dito sa ating pagfile ng resolution. Nang sa ganon ay matugunan muna uh ang mga isius na ito para bago magkaroon ng eleksyon.
So, ang, ang ang parang uh hinahabol natin ay ang pa, ang magiging kalalabasan nito with or without Sulu uh the resolution will push through for the extension.
Um, ang hiniling po sana natin uh ay uh madesisyonan. Of course, uh, ayaw nating mawala 'yung Sulu um, sa, sa Bangsamoro. Um, but nonetheless, ang pagpapa siya ay nasa Supreme Court. Um, pero ng, habang wala pa 'yung desisyon, um, minarapat natin na magfile muna ng resolution para magkaroon muna ng space or enough time uh para makapagprepare kung ano man 'yung magiging consequences of uh the MR, uh, uh, consequences of the decision of the Supreme Court.
So, nung ito ay pinuo itong resolution, uh, kayo po ay nasa isip ninyo na kasama pa rin ang Sulu dito sa
Of course.
papalawin ng uh extension na to?
Of course, Mr. Speaker, as a proponent of this, buong puso ko pong sinasabi sa inyo na uh ang aking pong uh pananaw dito ay uh ang Sulu po ay talagang bahagi ng Bangsamoro Autonomous Region and Muslimin Denau. Um, dahil kung pag-usapan natin ang history ng Bangsamoro, hindi 'yan Bangsamoro kung wala ang Sulu. So, nandun po 'yung usapin ng Sulu uh sa, sa resolution na ito.
Still part of?
Yeah, still part of the BARM.
With that uh very generous reply or answers, I am uh hopeful and uh I am supporting this resolution. Not for the extension of my term, but uh for Congress to act on it immediately. So, uh, congratulation po at maraming salamat sa iyong pagtugon sa aking katanungan. At sana ay harinawa, magkaroon ng magandang resolution. Magiging uh uh, matatanggap ng ating mga tao sa Bangsamoro. Salamat po.
Salamat din po, Mr. Speaker.
Maraming salamat.
Tagalog.
Go ahead, Doc. Fifteen minutes, uh, fif- fifteen minutes break for prayer.
Fifteen?
Okay.
Now resume. Yes, Pl. Leader.
Mr. Speaker, to continue with our period of interpolation, may I recognize the gentleman from Lano del Sur, AMP Babao.
The gentleman from Lano del Sur and Palawan is also from Palawan.
And also from Palawan.
Is now recognized. Member of parliament, Kalimuntaha Babao is recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much, Madam Pl. Leader. This is pertaining to Committee Report Number 52, Madam Pl. Leader. Hello.
Ninety-two. Committee Report Number ninety-two.
Ninety-two? Okay. Proposal Resolution Number six forty-one. I just want to ask, kung bakit, before I proceed, I would like to register my support to this resolution. Kaya lang ang mayroon akong konting tatanungan sa proponent kung po pwede.
Will the proponent willing to accept any questions coming from the gentleman from Lano del Sur?
Yes, yes, Mr. Speaker. Opo, Mr. Speaker.
Well, actually, although we recognize that any legal measure emanates from the House and the Senate, but my concern is why do we have to remove the name of the President of the Republic of the Philippines who exercise the veto power? Anything that is being passed by the lower and upper houses will be forwarded to the President for either approval or exercises veto power. Hindi ba dapat na isama natin dito ang Pangulo ng Republika?
Mr. Speaker, ang gobyerno po ng Pilipinas ay binubuo ng three branches of government. Ang ating pong resolution ay papunta doon sa isang branch of the government, which is the Congress.
Yes, of course, Mr. Speaker. I fully agree with that, that the two branches, which is the legislative branch and the executive branch, pwera 'yung judiciary. But what I, you know, I wanted to explain, Mr. Speaker, is that the question that I raised is about why hindi natin isinama dito 'yung Presidente ng Republika ng Pilipinas, despite the fact that although I fully agree that the House and the Senate ng gagaling legislative measure, but still it will go up to the President for approval or denial. Hindi ba dapat na isama natin dito ang Pangulo? Like, for example, a resolution respectfully request requesting the President of the Republic of the Philippines, comma, the House of Representiative, and the Senate of the Philippines.
Tama po 'yun, Mr. Speaker. Yung anumang pagpapa-sya na mangyayari dito sa request natin sa Kongreso, kung positibang magiging response ng Kongreso ay i-elevate sa Presidente. Kung magpakaganun pa man, kung sa tingin natin na mag-progress, pwede rin tayong pumasan ng isang pangresolution para sa ating Presidente.
Yes, that is the natural course. Si paret resolution na lang 'yung sa Presidente, if there is already a bill filed in Congress, as if anything has been said Presidente, to certify the bill as filed in Congress, urgent bill.
Urgent bill, oh.
So, there is that plan from the proponent that we will not include, because if she will agree, my only proposal is to include the President in this resolution.
I think we'll do it one at a time, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, so, moving again, we can request the proponent to maybe file another resolution explicitly mentioning the President without the House and the Senate, because we are talking here of extension, resetting elections coming 2025 to 2028. And definitely, this is outside the power of COMLEC to postpone the election for this longer time, three years, another term. So, tama po ito, that's why I register my support to this. My only concern is the inclusion of the President in this request, in this resolution. So, if it is not, I mean, the proponent is not agreeable that instead of filing another resolution, all we have to do is just include the President. For example, if she will allow me to read my proposal, a resolution respectfully requesting the President of the Republic of the Philippines, the House of Representiative, and the Senate of the Philippines to further extend the precision period from 2025 to 2028. Yung po ang mga suggestion na instead of making another resolution, isadag na lang natin ito kung pakalagang proponent.
Mr. Speaker, bigyan po natin ang discretion 'yung Office of the President, kung ano po 'yung maiisip nila. Kasi kung maile legislate 'yan ng Congress, may desisyon pa rin 'yung Office of the President, whether to veto or to approve any legislative measure. So, huwag pa natin ilamp altogether 'yung legislative process and the executive process.
Mr. Speaker, hindi ho natin pinangunahan ang ating Pangulo. Sapagkat ito ay, if you will see the resolution, this is only a request. In fact, nilagay pa natin respectfully requesting, this is a request. And then it is within the prerogative of the President, whether after approval from the lower house and the upper house, he may exercise his power to approve it or veto such resolution. Itong sa atin po, ano to eh, request lang po eh. Because we are not, we do not have the power to file appeal extending the life of Pito, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, the right of the gentleman to file a resolution is also equally important with my resolution that was filed right now and being subjected for deliberation. So, kung sa tingin ng proponent ay hindi sapat, 'yung nafile natin ngayon, siya po ay member din ng parliament na may karapatan na magfile ng kanyang legislative measure, Mr. Speaker.
So, in other words, Mr. Speaker, my proposal is not accepted, but okay lang po 'yung mga, I will not call for the division of the House, because it's within the prerogative of the proponent whether she will allow the inclusion. My request to include the President para isa na lang, so that we will not be doing another resolution requesting the President to extend, kasi wala pa action ng House eh. We know that, that the President, we are not under martial law, where he can just issue a decree, but it has to emanate from the House and the Senate for the extension of such measure. But anyway, ayaw tanggapin. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Speaker, for our third interpolator, I move that we recognize...
President Nata Si Ano?
I move that we recognize our Deputy Chief Minister, the Honorable Hatimil Hassan.
The newly appointed Deputy Chief Minister is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I am talking manifestation lang. I'd like to reaffirm that when the moro national liberation problem and the government of the Republic of the Philippines negotiated according nineteen thirty-six treaty agreement, at the nineteen eighty-six treaty agreement, the government then was, represented, all branches of government were represented, and they negotiated as whole of government, meaning the Department of Justice, Congress, and of course the opposite President were all represented. As of that time, Mr. Speaker, the representative of the government of the Republic of the Philippines or the Department of Justice was then former Chief Justice, De Castro. or the Department of Justice was then former Chief Justice Castro. And if ever there was constitutional questions during the negotiations, Justice Castro was always the one that came in and make pronouncement and decision that all the peace and all the agreements that the government of the Republic of the Philippines and the modern national sign, they were all constitutional. And this was the reason why even the Republic Act 6734 was brought before the Supreme Court, before the Supreme Court, the Supreme Court slept on that. Until now, there was no decision. With that, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to manifest that we should go back and respect all the agreements that the government of the Republic of the Philippines have signed with the moro national liberation front and the moro Islamic liberation front, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Minister Hatimil Hassan. And for our fourth and final interpellator, I move that we recognize the Honorable Attorney General Lorena.
The last interpellator, our Deputy Floor Leader, Attorney Jose Ripani Lorena is recognized from the province of Tawi-Tawi.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. While I'm now registered voter of Tawi-Tawi, I'm still a resident of Sulu by heart and by affinity. Anyway, I am a member of this, I am a sponsor of this resolution. I am a member of the Rules, but I have not participated in the meeting of the Rules. But my question is leading towards a settlement and to amplify further the resolution. To the proponent, is I still available to answer some question?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
In the resolution title, it states that the extension or compromise resolution to postpone is on course on legal issues. This conference, eh.
Yes, Mrs. Speaker.
And in the course of the interpretation of Deputy Speaker and every time, you mentioned that the resolution was filed after the resolution of the Supreme Court removing Sulu from the bar.
Yes, Mrs. Speaker.
And you have also mentioned in the interpretation that there are several most difficult considerations already filed.
Yes, Mrs. Speaker.
Now, my question is, will the effect of the filing of the resolution not stay the separation of Sulu or suspend the separation of Sulu from the bar?
Ano 'yun, pwedeng mahuli?
Well, the decision of the Supreme Court partially granted the two constitution acts that the eleven seven five were constitutional, but it also potentially granted the petition by allowing the separation of Sulu because it's not of law.
Yes.
But the motion for reconsideration is to address that issue. And under the rules, motion for reconsideration will suspend the effect of a resolution, am I correct?
Um, hindi po ako abugado, pero palagay ko ganun po 'yun.
So, in this time of the, in this time period, Sulu is still part of the bar?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. In fact, during the intergovernmental relations meeting, there were some arrangements with regards to the implementation, continuing implementation of the programs and projects of the Bangsa-Moro Government in Sulu.
Yes. So, to call for an election when the Comelec within the dependency of the motion for reconsideration, they should, if we go by the suspension of the effect of the resolution, they should include the province of Sulu.
I think so, Mrs. Speaker.
And therefore, candidates in Sulu can still file the certificate of candidacy because they're still part, am I correct?
I suppose, Mr. Speaker.
Assuming for the sake of argument that the motion for reconsideration is denied, will they can sit as members of the Parliament?
Right now, if we base on the appointments, the appointments were based on the merits of the qualifications of the appointees and not with the areas they represent because we were chosen based on our qualifications as an interim government and therefore, anyone can be part of the BTE.
The question is to the election. If election is called and there are candidates from Sulu who file a certificate of candidacy and they are elected, what if the motion for reconsideration is denied? Will they be allowed to sit in the Parliament?
Um, I suppose that will be, that will give ano'to, parang final and exocutory decision as regards the final verdict about the situation of Sulu and therefore, it is excluded already.
That's correct. I read the provision and I think if under the present we are put in a bind, because if we call an election and there are candidates who will file, if they are elected and the decision of the motion for reconsideration is negative, all their efforts and their expenses to participate in the election will be wasted.
I agree, Mr. Speaker. Yes, Mr. Speaker, because by operation of the decision of the Supreme Court, they are no longer part of the Bangsa-Moro. If that will be the case.
Thank you. Now, what if the Comelec will proceed with an election and they will exclude Sulu?
Um, I don't know legally if that will happen, that is legal, but right now, it's the subject of the motion for reconsideration. Then that's why we are calling for this resolution to be acted upon by the Congress because we know that there are legal issues.
In the statement of Chairman Garcia, I read in the statement, he said that election can proceed minus Sulu because we can have only minus the district of 73 Parliament. But that was before the filing of the motion for recall.
Yes, Mrs. Speaker.
With the motion for recall, if the motion for recall is approved and we deny participation for Sulu, we did not deny the province of Sulu appropriate representation because we excluded them from the election, am I correct?
Exactly, Mrs. Speaker.
So, may I interrupt regarding your line of questioning? Can the Comelec decide with an election with least than 80 members? Because the law says in our Bangsa-Moro organic law, the parliament shall be composed of 80 members. The word is "shall" be composed of 80 members. Sa material part, that is the minimum numbers as provided for in the law. Can they hold an election below the minimum numbers of 80?
That's correct, Mr. Speaker and my one proponent. The Comelec has the authority to reduce the number from 80 and neither can they reallocate because the law provides that there should be an 80 member. You're correct. When the 80 member was paid, there was no result of the previsit yet because that is the minimum.
Yes, that's true.
That is correct. Therefore, the assumption therefore is to conduct an election now would be to provide volatiles and uncertainty, am I correct?
Yes, because there are standing legal issues.
Yeah, because of the standing legal issues.
Yes.
And non-resolution of the motion for reconsideration before election and with the conduct of election will not further the essence of autonomy because there will be misrepresentation, there will be problem, it's only from that election, am I correct?
Yes, Mrs. Speaker.
Having said that, Mr. Speaker, Madam Proponent, I would propose that although it is in the language of the resolution that the extension can be had, but then it is also partly discussed in the report that it also means to postpone the election.
Yes, as part of the amendments of the members of the Committee on Rules.
So, in my reading of the Honorable Selection Code, the Comelec for lack of material time and lack of financial support and the non-reparation for election, the postponement may be a bit, right? That is, I think, my reading. And without extension, commission on election can postpone but for a brief period. Nonetheless, Mr. Speaker, having laid out to call an election at this time puts the bar in a bind because we don't know where to go. If the motion for reconsideration is not in, is that either member, except denied or granted. So I think a strict representation because as I have explained, the Chair of the Committee on Rules, postponement of election is only over the resolution, I will not move anymore to amend to include postponement because clearly that is the intent as specified by the Committee on Rules. I would just say for the record that I think there is more harm to proceed with an election than to delay the election in order to address a legal issue. I support this particular legislation, may I have my presentation?
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Is that our last interpellator?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, there be no...
Meron pa, meron pa.
Mr. Speaker, may I move that we recognize MP Dr. Husemin Delangalan.
Mga doctor, mga doctor, mahilig siya last minute. May naranatala nun, Dr. Husemin Delangalan is recognized.
Thank you, Honorable Speaker, thank you, Madam Floor Leader. My question is regarding to the voters' education of our, the Comelec to our constituents. I have read in some articles and journals that kailangan talaga pang paigtingin 'yung voters' education. Now, may I ask the author of the resolution is that may knowledge ba siya with regarding to the conducting of the voters' education?
Mga doctor na. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Malinaw po 'yung ating isa sa mga reasons bakit pinus natin itong resolution. Marami na po akong nakausap at marami po akong nabasa. Ang isa sa mga nabasa ko ay 'yung report ng Institute for Autonomy and Governance at malinaw doon sa research na ginawa ng IAG na kulang na kulang sa kaalaman 'yung ating mga electorate patungkol dito sa parliamentary election. Nung isang araw lang po, October 15, ang Mindana news ay nagpalabas ng isang article na nagsasabi na no less than the provincial election officer ng Lanau del Sur ay nagsabi na 'yung mga voters sa probinsya ng Lanau del Sur ay may kakulangan sa kaalaman patungkol sa dalawang balota na gagamitin sa parliamentary election. 'Yung isa ay 'yung sa national and local at isa ay 'yung sa parliamentary. Inamin mismo doon sa article na yun, sinabi mismo doon sa article na yun na dahil sa kakulangan ng resources ng Comelec, kung kaya't 'yung kanilang information, education, and communication sa mga voters ay hindi masyadong na-push dahil sa kakulangan ng mga resources. 'Yan po 'yung budget, tao, at 'yung oras. May mga nakausap din po akong non-government organizations. Ito po ay mga bisita ko doon sa aking upisina. Ang kwento nga nung isang head ng isang NGO, sabi niya napakalungkot dahil pagkausap namin 'yung mga common tao during sa mga trainings or activities nila, gumagawa daw sila ng pre-test. At isa sa mga pre-test na tinatanong nila ay sino ang Chief Minister? Sino ang wali? Ito 'yung mga basic na meron sa Bangsa-Moro, hindi pa nga siguro tinanong kung sino ang speaker ng parliament. Ang nasabi lang sa akin ay sino ang Chief Minister at sino ang wali? Ang sagot daw doon sa isang pre-test ay ang Chief Minister daw ay Cesar IQ. At ang wali daw ay 'yung kumasal sa kanila nung sila ay kinasal, 'yun daw 'yung wali. So sabi ko, kung ganun, 'yung basic of the basic na dapat na alam na ng tao ay hindi pa nila alam much more about the election. Itong parliamentary election na bagong bago sa ating panglasa, bagong bago sa ating paninig at bagong bago sa ating lahat. So ganun po 'yung level of the education with regards to the parliamentary elections. Kung kaya't nangangailangan talaga tayo ng sapat na oras para matutunan, maalaman, at maintindihan ng taong bayan, ano ba itong Bangsa-Moro Government? Ano ba itong parliamentary elections? At ano-ano 'yung mga nangyayari ngayon dito sa Bangsa-Moro Government?
Thank you, thank you sa ating proponent, thank you, Speaker. One additional question is that sa aking pagkaintindi sa sinabi ng ating proponent na makakatulong ang extension sa, sa kumbaga pa ma-intensify 'yung ating voters' education?
Tama po 'yan, kailangan natin ng sapat na oras para mapag-aralan ng taong bayan. Kasi lahat po ng nangyayari ngayon sa Bangsa-Moro ay bago. Bago na nga tayo, bago 'yung gobyerno, bago 'yung system of government, bago 'yung mga tao, bago 'yung election, bago lahat. Kaya parang sabay-sabay 'yung information na kailangang malaman nung tao. Kaya ang suspeksa ko dito, it's either information overload or wala talagang nakakaabot na information sa kanila.
Thank you, Madams, thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have no more question, Mr. Chair, but I want to manifest that in my line of questioning, I am not discrediting the actions of the Comelec with regards to the information dissemination campaign with regards to the voters' education. But this, I believe, if there's a way of extending this parliament, makakatulong po ito at para sa next parliamentary election ay kumbaga pa plansyado 'yung election. 'Yun lamang po, maraming salamat.
Thank you very much. May interpellator?
Mr. Speaker, there being no other interpellator, I move that we terminate the period of interpolation.
There is a motion to end the period of interpolation. Jollici candid, there being no objection, this motion is hereby approved.
I move that we open the period of amendment.
There is a motion to open the period of amendment. Jollici candid, there being no objection, this motion is hereby approved.
There being no proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker, I move that we dispense with the period of amendment.
The period of amendment is dispensed, there being no objection, this motion is hereby approved.
I move that we approve Committee Report Number 92 and Propose Resolution Number 641, subject to style.
There is a motion to approve Committee Report Number 92 under Propose Resolution Number 641. Jollici candid, this motion is approved, subject to style.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, moving on to item number two, Committee Report Number 93, submitted by the Committee on Basic Higher and Technical Education. May call on the Chairperson of the Committee, no other than MP Professor Eddie Ali, to deliver the Committee Report on Propose Resolution Number 22, entitled Resolution Encouraging the Ministry of Basic Higher and Technical Education to consider the provision of free hygiene kits, especially free sanitary napkins in all public high school comfort rooms within the Bangsa-Moro Autonomous Region in Muslimindanaw.
The Chair recognize the Chair of the Committee on Basic Higher and Technical Education to render... to render a sponsorship message in the Committee Report of the proposed resolution. You are recognized, Chair.
Bismillah. Alhamdulillah. Wassalamu'ala, Rasulillah. Wa'ala alihi wasabi asma'in amabad. All beloved Speaker, Attorney Pangalian Balindong Um the Presiding Officer, Deputy Speaker um at the Attorney Presalel Tago colleagues in the Parliament the Bangsa Moro people fellow public servants Assalamualaikum wrakmuthulaitaala wa abrakatuhum. As Chairman of the Committee on Basic Higher and Technical Education I am honored to report to the plenary Committee Report number ninety-three on the proposed Resolution number ninety number twenty-two recommending its approval without amendments. Resolution number twenty-two is sponsored by MP Engineer Baintan Ampatuan and co-authored by MP Samuel Bahal Ja- Samuel Bahal Mawalil Attorney Liza Masuhod Alamiya, Attorney Sohalto Ambuluto, Attorney Rasul Mitmog Junior Engineer Don Albison E. Loong, MP Rasul I. Ismail Yurstruli Abdul Wahab Pak, Ahmad Abbas, Harun Abbas Mujib Abu Ibrahim Ali, Engineer Baintan Na- Doble Muhammad Kelly Antao Tarhata Maglangit Jafar Apollo Michael Matalam Nurida Miswari, Ali Salik, and Said M. Sadiq. Mr. Speaker, the Committee on Basic Higher and Technical Education to which was referred, Propose Resolution number twenty-two introduced by MP Engineer Baintan Ampatuan, entitled A Resolution Encouraging the Ministry of Basic Higher and Technical Education, MBHTE to consider the provision of free hygiene kits especially free sanitary napkins in all public high schools comfort rooms within the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao, Barm. Upon deliberation of the Committee on Basic Higher and Technical Education on its meeting last seventeen Muharram fourteen forty-six or twenty-three July twenty twenty-four the Committee is respectfully recommending that this proposed resolution be approved without amendments respectfully submitted by the Chairperson of the Committee on Basic and Higher Technical Education.
Floor Leader.
Uh Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt Committee Report number ninety-three for deliberation.
There is a motion to adopt Committee Report number ninety-three for deliberation. Jurisprudent, there being no objection, this is hereby approved.
I move that we open the period of interpolation.
There is a motion to open the period of interpolation. Uh Jurisprudent, there being no objection, this is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize uh uh okay, we uh MP Jo. Lorena is giving way to MP Babao, so I move that uh we recognize uh MP uh Babao.
MP Alimontababao is recognized.
Sa Madam Floor Leader, Speaker, uh isa lang po ang aking gustong malaman dito and I hope uh the proponent will uh answer this question, just one. Why only to why only provide free hygiene kits, especially free sanitary napkins in all public high school comfort rooms? Why only? Bakit sa mga high school lang? Hindi ba kasama rito mga elementary at uh college uh uh college universities na government also? Bakit sa bakit dito lang sa high school? Yun lang po ang kakitaan ko.
I refer ko sa'yo. I refer ko sa'yo. Okay.
The proponent and the the proponent, the Chair of the Committee, may answer the query from gentleman from Lanau del Suran Palawan.
Mr. Speaker, I refer uh the interpreter to the uh principal author, Mr. Speaker.
The principal author of the Monsieur is recognized, MP Baintan Ampatuan.
Sige, pwede bang sagutin ko siya ng ano, Mr. Speaker, mamaya? Bakit? Kasi usaping babae ito eh.
Usaping babae daw.
Normally, Mr. Speaker, kidding aside, normally, Mr. Speaker, um ang mga nangangailangan ng uh sanitary napkins ay 'yung mga dalaga, ay kadalasan ng mga dalaga na sa high school. Although ngayon, may mga cases na na ma- maaga nagiging dalaga 'yung mga bata pero marami sa ating mga dalaga ay nandun sa high school, uh Mr. Speaker.
Well, actually, Mr. Speaker, uh meron namang high school na ngayon, grade twelve, grade eleven mga dalaga ano po 'yan eh, Mr. Speaker eh. Oh, 'yung uh grade eleven tsaka twelve, high school ba 'yun? So sila lang, sa college, hindi na?
Uh, high school po. Uh, high school po. Kasi yun 'yung um ayun na sa public schools uh yun 'yung mahirap na stage. Kasi nag-aadopt pa rin 'yung mga kabataan dyan sa stage na 'yan, so dapat na nagagabayan din sila at natutulungan natin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I am satisfied with the answer. Maraming salamat po.
Thank you very much for the satisfaction, unique answer. Uh anyway, the the one that to interpret is is hence the Committee Report and is one of the author, oh yes.
Mr. Speaker, we have more interested members of the Parliament who wish us to interpolate, so we recognize uh
MP Lorena, you uh are you yielding?
Yes, with the indulgence again of MP Jo. Lorena, I move that we recognize Deputy Speaker Attorney Nabiltan.
So he gives way to the to the be the Deputy Speaker uh Attorney Nabiltan. Yes, sir, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Madam uh Floor Leader. Uh ano bang dahilan bakit kailangan kinailangan natin itong resolution na 'to? Ito ba dahil tayo, 'yung mga batang nag-aaral, high school ba 'yun? High school ba 'yun? And ano ba 'yan, libre or iproprovide ng Bangsa Moro Government or at their own expense katulad sa mga sinehan? Na may mga pendo-pendo para magkuha ka ng napkin?
Mrs. Speaker, we we are talking about public schools at uh kadalasan po sa mga public schools Um 'yung mga nag-aaral po dito ng mga kabataan, um 'yung uh medyo may problema sa sa buhay na sa kanilang financial uh status, Mrs. Speaker ito po ay added burden sa isang nagdadalaga or mga dalaga na mga bata. Aside sa pag-isip sa kanilang pag-aaral uh kung wala silang pambili ng mga ganitong bagay, ay nakakatulong sa uh problema So sa panahon ngayon, lalong-lalo sa panahon ngayon, uh ang daming source of depression, uh Mr. Speaker kaya kung if there's a way, kahit sa maliit na bagay, sa tingin natin ay um magiging instrumental tayo doon sa uh pag-grow uh sa growth and development ng uh ating mga kabataan ito po ay malaking tulong, lalong-lalo na sa mga kababaihan.
Maraming salamat. Pero po, ito ay so since sinabi ng nating uh sponsor ng um public school, ang ibig sabihin libre?
Opo, Mrs. Speaker.
Saan kukunin itong pera para dyan? Ito ba magiging part ng budget ng MBHTE?
Opo, uh ang magpa-plano nito ay uh ang ating implementing agency, 'yung Ministry of Basic Higher and Technical Education. So uh kung paano po nila gagawin, paano po nila iprioritize uh 'yung mga nasa lublob na lugar, liblib na lugar uh nasa sa MBHTE na po yun. Ang importante sa atin ay uh um parang nabigyan natin ng uh pagtingin 'yung mga pangangailangan ng ating mga kababaihan, lalong-lalo na 'yung mga uh youth uh women na uh nasa uh nasa mga liblib na lugar.
Salamat po. At ito ay ang ang ibig sabihin nito 'yung public schools na 'yan may mga tubig siya. If suppose pa natin na may mga tubig, kasi aside from napkin, kailangan may tubig ah.
Yeah, in principle, Mr. Speaker.
Unahin, tubig o napkin?
Uh in principle, um tama po 'yan, Mr. Speaker. Uh base po sa um latest standard design ng ating mga school buildings Uh at ito po ay dumadaan din sa ating um pagsusuri sa budget Um ang standard uh design ng mga buildings natin ngayon ay may mga CR na at may mga tubig So um sa tanong na kung ano 'yung uunahin uh Mr. Speaker, dapat mauna mo na 'yung structure, no? Bago tayo maglagay, baka saan siya mapunta? So um ito ay parang additional na services doon sa regular services na uh binibigay or um sinaserve ng ating MBHTE.
Ikaw ba ay nangunguna sa pag-sponsor nito, Madam?
Uh ako po 'yung principal author, Mr. Speaker.
Ah okay, so ako ay malaking tiwala ako dito sa principal sponsor dahil 'yung MOTC binigyan niya ng Potabato Airport ng VIP lounge, kulang na lang 'yung sandwiches saka ano, nakakape Uh MOTC daw. Anyway, salamat po at uh I hope that makakuha tayo ng 'yung ilan ang gagamit, makakuha tayo ng mga enrollees number of enrollees dito para tugma 'yung budget dito. So salamat po.
Tama po.
Thank you very much, Deputy Speaker Attorney Nabiltan. Uh Mr. Speaker, um for our final interpreter, I move that to be recognized again uh uh Deputy Floor Leader, Attorney Jo. Lorena.
Deputy Floor Leader, Attorney Lorena is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Floor Leader. My first question has already been raised by my BMF pertaining to toilets in one area but I was already appropriate the answer that uh the these program of infrastructure under our education sector now covers toilet So because of that, I would just make a manifestation that then could, uh Mr. Speaker, that in order to make pay for to the infrastructure design of our educational system, the school let us assume this always make it a point that the budget cover infrastructure covers toilet, water, and other facilities that pertains to sanitation because sanitation is the key to a health healthy environment so I would just commit my interpretation to that kind of manifestation. Again, Mr. Speaker, since I do believe in this appropriateness of the resolution and the fact that uh we are now catering to a society
Salamat dito.
concerned about the health of our people, then I I put the clause the interpolation in that manifestation that the budget corresponding to our destruction of the school must cover not only the toilet, the water, but all other facilities accessories needed for sanitation purposes. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much for that uh manifestation. Yes, Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to terminate the period of interpolation.
There is a motion to terminate the period of interpolation. Jurisprudent, there being no objection, this is hereby approved.
I move to dispense the period of amendment.
There is a motion to dispense period of amendment. Jurisprudent, there being no objection, this is hereby approved.
I move to approve Committee Report number ninety-three and Propose Resolution number twenty-two Resolution Encouraging the Ministry of Basic Higher and Technical Education to consider the provision of free hygiene kits, especially free sanitary napkins in all public school comfort rooms within the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to approve Committee Report number ninety-three as propos- uh under the Propose Resolution number twenty-two Jurisprudent, there being no objection, Committee Report number thirty uh ninety-three and the Propose Resolution number twenty-two is now approved.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes, the Chair of the Committee, please your pleasure.
Please allow me, gusto ko lang po mag-salamat sa
What kind of thanks that uh you want to give to us?
Hindi, mamaya na 'yung thanks na yun, pero papasalamat lang po. Okay, gusto ko lang po magpasalamat sa mga interpolators at lahat po ng miembro ng Bangsa Moro Tradition Authority Parliament sa suporta sa resolution na 'to. Um Maliban po doon sa mga structure, na bagong structure, school building na nasabi po namin na mayroon ng uh toilet ang mga structures ngayon pero ma- para sa ating kaalaman din na, Mr. Speaker, maliban po doon nagpoprovide po ang MBHTE ng tinatawag natin wash- washing machine washing washing area, okay? Isang ano po 'yan, isang maliit na building na kung saan po doon na doon ginagawa, no? Ang C- mayroong CR at uh washing facilities po Uh just for the information of all. Maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker.
Thanks for that time po.
Washing facilities.
Thanks for that time po. Uh, Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other agenda in the order of business, I move to adjourn until tomorrow at one o'clock in the afternoon.
Adjourn, adjourn. Uh there is a motion to adjourn until tomorrow uh session is adjourned until tomorrow at one p.m. Uh, session is adjourned until tomorrow at one p.m.